Hey, everybody, everybody, everybody. Welcome, welcome. Yes, it is Monday, October 16th, 2023. Welcome to Raging Chickens Out to Coop Live. This is Kevin Mahoney, editor and founder of Raging Chicken. On Out to Coop Live, we talk to progressives, activists, and troublemakers of all sorts, right from our own backyards and across the country. You can join us at the end of the week for our Friday Politics Roundup, where we break down the good, the bad, and the ugly in state and national politics. You can get all our shows by subscribing to our podcasts on Podbean, iTunes, Spotify, wherever you get your podcasts. And you can support this show, become a patron for as little as five bucks a month. Head over to patreon.com/RCPress today. You can help out the show right now with the heading over to our YouTube channel, if you're not there already. Smash that subscribe button, like the stream for this show, and hit that notification bell so you know every time that we go live. And if you're one of our awesome podcast listeners, make sure to leave us a five-star review on whatever platform you listen on, and leave a comment to let other folks know why you like the show. You'd be amazed how little things like that help other people find the show. For more PA progressive talk, tune into Rick Smith Show's livestream at 9:00 PM Eastern. Check him on his YouTube channel, Twitter, Facebook, for all the streams, and subscribe to his podcast wherever you get your podcasts. Check out the ricksmithshow.com for the latest across all his platforms. And checking out, gotta check out that Sisters of the Night Caucus podcast. The amazing PA women stirring the political cauldron behind this podcast, rock the house, and they know where the bodies are buried. Make sure to follow them on Twitter at @thenightcaucus. That's @thenightcaucus on Twitter, and subscribe to their podcasts on Anchor, Spotify, iTunes, or wherever you get your podcasts. If you haven't heard, Signal has a new podcast. Yep, it's a new podcast for the Bucks County Beacon. It's even not so new anymore, but it's fantastic. And The Signal was hosted by the Beacon's editor-in-chief, Cyril Micalenko, and produced by this guy, yours truly. Twice a month, The Signal will shine a light in right-wing extremist currents streaming through Bucks County and beyond. Cyril invites guests who can provide insight, analysis, and organizing solutions so that we can steer the community toward calmer, saner, progressive routes. And in case you missed it, the Beacon also launched a new Gen Z-focused and hosted podcast called The Civic Circle. Episode two of The Civic Circle just dropped, and it rocked. Check out all the podcasts at buckscountybeacon.podbean.com for all that, and you know, subscribe. Just use your whatever podcast catcher you use, iTunes, Spotify, but they're everywhere. Check them out. Attention, all you gamers out there, The Game In, that's with two N's. The Game In is a Quicker Town-based, black family-owned gaming store. They're friends of the show. They've got everything from retro N64s, the latest consoles, video games for all platforms, collectibles, action figures, Funko Pops, walls of Funko Pops. And kids get discounts for the days in the report card. Gotta check it out. Check them out on their Facebook page, follow them on Twitter at @TheGameIn, again with two N's. Got a question about a game over something hard to get? Shoot me a message or drop them an email at thegameminpa@gmail.com. A shout out goes to Jonathan Mann, who wrote our intro song, There Are No People in the Future. Check out all his stuff on his YouTube page and follow him on Twitter at @songadayman. That's with two N's, @songadayman on Twitter. Whoo, well, today, a little bit of a dragging myself to the board today. I know, and that's surprising maybe because we missed Friday. Friday, there were some appointments that were involved. There were some, like, doctor appointments are involved with people in my family that got switched around at the last minute, and that was, that was that. So, um, so I'm sorry there wasn't more notice of that, kind of missed this past Friday show. But it's just been, it's been, man, I'll tell you, it's been a weird, it's been a weird time. Um, it's been a while since I've, uh, I don't know, just been... I've always been stressed. I've always been, felt like I've overworked, always feel like I don't have enough time. Right now, I'm just dragging for, for reasons that I just don't quite understand, to be honest with you. Um, and so tonight, we're gonna have a little casual Out to Coop Live in the spirit of kind of rebooting going forward. Um, uh, you know, I was in the middle of last week. It was all geared up for kind of reaching out to a couple of folks who have been wanting to reach out to before, and, uh, there was just like these little bits of news, uh, would come in. Some of it just kind of very local stuff with like, you know, my work. Um, but then, you know, what happened in, uh, in Israel and the Gaza Strip, it's just... It's horrifying, you know? I mean, it's just, uh, you know, it was, it was just one of these things, you know, I could feel it coming. I remember I have this, this feeling. I said, oh, crap. After that kind of like massacre, um, that, you know, those Hamas, whatever militants, terrorists, whatever you wanna call them, like slaughtered all those Israelis, right? Citizens, children, women, you know, every, didn't matter. Um, and then there was the retaliation against, um, Palestinians, um, in the Gaza Strip, and the locking it down, cutting off food and water. Uh, we had one of the lead military folks from, you know, Israel calling, you know, them animals. And you know, I... What I could see, what I could see was gonna happen, right? You know, I remember like thinking about this, um, is that it's, social media is just gonna get crazy, right? Um, and it was like this, you know, it's like this dance, this weird dance that happens. And I, and I know this tendency on the left all too well. Um, I certainly expected it from the right. Um, but it's like, suddenly, the only way that we've, you know, that like, the media seems to know how to make sense of such horrific acts as this is to just, just to play team sports, right? And you know, frankly, we've been trained to do the same thing. And so watching, you know, the, the statements come out, and these, these petty arguments back and forth about, you know, the side with Israel, the side with the, uh, with side with the Palestinians. And look, it's... The massacres are there. And like, look, I, I totally understand the impulse, right? I understand the impulse from those folks who've been, you know, like, working for years to try to talk about this systemic apartheid state in, uh, you know, in the Gaza Strip and the West Bank. I mean, you know, any human rights organization, like, you know, the, the UN has called this, you know, largest, largest world's open air, the world's largest open-air prison, that this is an apartheid state, you know, and, you know, look, so much is, so much of the way that the US media covers Israel is through the lens of, you know, of the Holocaust and World War II. And look, at some, at some level, that's appropriate, right? I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's absolutely appropriate to kind of understand, like, the history of Israel and so on like this, right? Um, but the government of Israel right now, right, are, are not the, the persecuted, right? I mean, they are a right-wing extremist version of that government. You know, and Sam Seder talks about this on, on The Majority Report all the time. He's like, you know, he's like, you know, he'll say, he's like, look, I'm a supporter of Israel. And if for Israel to stay, right, for Israel to kind of be successful long-term as a state, right, for, for it to continue to exist, it cannot treat Palestinian people this way. And you say, like, the extremism of the, you know, the settler movement and the extremist in, um, in, in the Israeli government right now are the worst enemy of Israel. You know, it is, and I, you know, totally get that. And then I also get like, you know, look, you have the Palestinians who've been herded into walled prison camps, basically, in the Gaza Strip, and you've seen in the West Bank, which you have the settler movement, which is like, literally bulldozing over Palestinian property in order to kind of claim it for Israelis. And that's been ramped up since this new, um, you know, coalition government with Netanyahu and the extremists and the Israeli government. And you know, and so like, there's all this, you know, this, this, this back and forth when we start talking about peoples and nations as like, as if they're one thing, right? And it's the most dangerous move when we start equating people, all the people in a particular space, or all people of a particular religion, or all people of, you know, particular, you know, ethnicity, whatever you, whatever you, however you wanna frame that. When we use broad categories and then say that they're all the same. I mean, it's the classic move of demagoguery. It's the classic move of genocide. It's like reducing horrific acts and then blaming everybody. You know, this is, this is one of the things. It's like when Hamas goes in and slaughters civilians, right? And they're slaughtering them because they're Israeli Jews, right? They're, they're, they're equating those people with the policies and the history and the Israeli movement and things like this, right? And of the extremist government, right? They're, they're doing that. They're saying, because you are associated with support for Israel, we are going to kill you because you're, you're personally responsible. That, that, you know, 10-year-old child, that five-year-old child, right, that, that new mom is, you know, that, that, that guy, that old man, they're all, you know, they're responsible, they're just culpable, and therefore deserve to die. And then when the Israelis kind of turn around with, you know, I mean, it's not like, you know, anyone in any of the Palestinian states has nearly the kind of arsenal that, that Israelis have. So they just start kind of like, you know, bombing some of the most densely populated city in the world, and say that they're going after Hamas. But you have military commanders saying that, look, we're going after animals. And then now it's, I, you know, the count today was like well over 2,000 to 2,500, you know, people dead in Palestine or in Gaza. And you, you, you know, the government says we're going after Hamas, and yet you see thousands of people dead, kids dead. You know, I heard an interview from the BBC last night, and we were talking, you know, interviewing these doctors in these hospitals, and say 40% of their injury victims, severe injury victims in the hospitals were, uh, were kids. That figure's pretty close to what the death toll is there too as well. And you know, it's awful. And I, I don't know, there was, there was one, Naomi Klein is one of my favorite writers, period. And it was interesting, I was talking to my friend Mike, my friend Mike Ambone, he writes, you know, you might have recognized him from writing, I write some of the book reviews for the Bucks County Beacon, um, a guy I worked with in Union for, for years. He's one of my oldest friends at the university. I don't know why that's relevant to what I'm gonna say, but anyways, I bumped into him, hadn't seen him before, right? Uh, we just kind of, whatever. So I ran into him, said, yeah, yeah, yeah. And he's like, he said, oh, man, Naomi Klein's new book, Doppelganger. And I just, I just picked it up and was just gonna start reading it. And like, I said, oh, man, she's an affair. And you know, Mike was saying, he's like, yeah, she's like, she's kind of right on the money. It's an amazing book. And I remember, um, her, and I was telling him that I saw an interview with her about, about that book, where she's saying, you know, basically what she tries to do is like map a political movement, movement, a moment. Um, and you know, that was always my experience and why I was always drawn to her work. Cause one, she's just, just, I think, just a fabulous writer. And two, she has a way of kind of connecting the dots, right, so to speak, and not in this kind of conspiratorial way, but kind of helping us understand any particular moment. So, in any event, um, so I was sitting there and just feeling really, you know, I dipped into social media to, you know, watch these kind of black and white arguments, right, where, you know, yeah, you know, again, it's the people on the left who just like blame, are blaming all Jews, right? You know, like doing that equation with the Israelis and the, and all Jewish people, you know, in Israel. And, you know, and on the flip side, you know, saying, no, 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 the Palestinians, kind of like, they slaughtered, you cannot stand for this kind of terrorism, right? And like, as if it's like, this mutually exclusive thing. And I always, you know, I, I teach these classes where we always talk about, we get into pro-con, either or stuff, is like, you gotta look for, like, you've gotta look for the, the, those voices that are left out of that narrative, right? Um, you know, gotta look at from, well, what if we don't group the world together in team sports, right? Government and government, or peoples and peoples like this, and we looked at it. And so I, I just, I don't know if you saw this, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this to you because it was the one thing that gave me a little bit of solace for this. And this was Naomi Klein writing on Wednesday, um, this past Wednesday, um, in the wake of this horrific violence and, uh, you know, war crimes, really, um, right across the board, um, was here. But here's what she says. She said, "I spent the evening in candlelight and tears with a dear friend who just learned that a close family member was among those massacred in Israel. I won't name the kibbutz to protect her privacy, but yes, it was unequivocally a massacre. We tried to explain the killing of this family member, a civilian with two kids, to our kids. We tried to do it in a way that would not fill their young hearts with fear and hatred for people who committed the crime. That was hard enough, but it was possible. Harder for us adults is the fact that, in their desire to celebrate the powerful symbolism of Palestinians escaping the open-air prison, is that Gaza, which occupied people have every right to do, as some of our supposed comrades on the left continue to minimize massacres of Israeli citizens, the civilians, and in some extreme cases, even to celebrate them. In fact, these callous displays are a gift to the militant, uh, to militant Zionism, since they neatly shore up and reconfirm its core and governing belief that the non-Jewish world hates Jews and always will. Look, even the bleeding heart left is making excuses for our killers and thinks that Jewish kids and old ladies deserve death merely by living in Israel, right? That's what, that's that argument that reinforces it and how Zionists respond. For Zionist believers, and Klein says, like, I'm not one of them, Jew hatred is the central rationale for why Israel must exist as a nuclear-armed fortress. Within this worldview, antisemitism is cast as a primordial force that cannot be weakened or confronted. The world will always turn away from us in our hour of need. Zionism tells us, just as it did during the Holocaust, which is why, um, which is why force alone is presented as the only conceivable response to any and all threats. The Israeli state's current murderous leveling of Gaza is the latest unspeakable horrific manifestation of this ideology, and there will be more in the coming days. Responsibility for these crimes of collective punishment rests solely with their perpetrators and their financial and military backers abroad. But we will all have to figure out how to make it stop. How do we confront this violent ideology? For one thing, we can recognize that when Israel, Israeli Jews are killed in their homes, and it is celebrated by people who claim to be anti-racist and anti-fascist, that, um, that is experienced as antisemitism, semitism by a great many Jews. And antisemitism, besides being hateful, is the rocket fuel of militant Zionism. What could lessen its power, drain it of some of that fuel? True solidarity. Humanism that unites people across ethnic and religious lines. Fierce opposition to all forms of identity-based hatred, including antisemitism. An international left rooted in values that side with the child over the gun every single time, no matter whose gun and no matter whose child. A left that is unshakably morally consistent and does not mistake that consistency with moral equivalency between occupier and occupied. Love. It is certainly worth a try. In these difficult times, I'd like to be part of a left like that. And that's it. That was her article. And I can imagine, look, and you know, I'm not, obviously, in Naomi Klein's head, but I could imagine that was a difficult piece to write. Right? Naomi Klein is Jewish, right? She's written about this before, and it's just the horrors on both sides of this. And the way that we're asked to put ourselves in these boxes, uh, you know, it reminds me of after like 9/11, right? You know, either you're with us or against us. You're either with us or you're with the terrorists, right? That's how it was framed after the 9/11 bombings. If you dare raise any question, you're considered a traitor or worse, that you helped enable the terrorists. That's how, I mean, that was the way that the logic works, and that's the way it still works. And that, uh, that was horrific. And that really, you know, that really sat, it's been, I mean, sitting with me all week. I'm not, I'm not alone in this, you know, I mean, watching with here, figuring kind of what, what can we do? When it's just, uh, lots of death is gonna happen, is happening. So anyways, I think that had a, you know, that, that was a chunk of, it was just kind of sitting with me so hard all week, and you know, and I couldn't help, and I don't want to kind of do the like, it's just like, no, cause it's not just like, but it reminded me a lot of what's been happening with our school boards. And it's been reminding me a lot what's happened with our politics. Um, and the reason I started this, we're talking about, you know, this is all playing itself out on social media and watching people go these corners is because just some of that way, you know, a lot of that, the toxic discourse, right, which is, you know, I've come to think about it, it's just another version of like just the team sportism, right? We're just gonna root for our person, right, or our side, or our ideology. Um, and you know, there was a long time when, you know, people like me who, you know, were in college in the, in the 90s and grew up in the 80s and stuff, when, when you got involved with the political movement, and I know this is still true today, but I mean, it was really strong, I remember back then. And it was always, you know, about, you gotta take a position, right? You gotta take a position. And there were critiques of all the, you know, the, like, the humanist stuff, right, that Naomi Klein is talking about here. And I remember about, you know, about liberal ideology and all this other kind of stuff. And, you know, when you got involved with political movements back then, as I did, you know, you're really, when you said things that were considered like, I don't know, humanist, right? You know, we had call-out culture back then too as well, right? You were called a poser, you were called like a dilettante, you were called like, you know, oh, yes, you, you, uh, you know, you know, yeah, you claim to be a lefty, but really, you're just, I mean, not just, I'm talking in general, you claim to be a lefty, but you know, you're just kind of like a liberal in disguise, right? All this kind of stuff. And, you know, that kind of exclusionary discourse, that kind of like holier-than-thouism, that kind of like, you know, team sportism, as I was, you know, saying there, where you have to, in order to be part of our team, you have to meet all these kind of criteria, right? And then if you, if you're not there, you're not there already, right? If you don't have the correct beliefs, then we're gonna oust you. You know, it, it had a way of being very powerful in defining in-group cohesion, right? But it was always done at the expense of keeping that in-group, right, especially on the left, very small. Because who the hell wants to be part of a movement when it's just gonna be about monitoring, you know, are you just doing things, saying things correctly? You're no longer doing it for the right reason, you know? And, you know, and there's something about this. And I, and I remember there was, you know, this, this, this one theorist, right? He's a literary theorist, his name is Terry Eagleton. And Terry Eagleton was, he can, he was considered one of the, you know, the leading theorists to kind of first really getting going post-modernism and post-structuralism, right? The popularize it in academics, right? He wrote this book called, like, In Theory, right? Or I think it was In Theory. And it's very popular. And Eagleton was, you know, very kind of critical and very kind of, you know, um, people, you know, would debate whether he was like a Marxist, like the right kind of Marxist, and all this other kind of stuff. But, you know, he wrote all this stuff and got, was very much part of that theory movement. And then he, later on his career, uh, later on, he, he published this book that was, you know, a book that was kind of, say, most personal, um, most biographical, most spoken from the eye, was called After Theory. And he, it's been a while since I've read that. So, you know, maybe just misremembering it might be telling you things that I took away from it rather than what he says directly. So, uh, so I'm gonna put that out front there. So, you know, haters gonna hate, 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 right? Um, but that's one of the things that was remarkable about that book. It was, uh, there was a certain degree of kind of like a confessional in it, in a way. Uh, I, that's the wrong word. It was more like a reflective tone to it, which was saying, which is saying, we kind of, kind of took our eyes off the prize, right? Um, it became about fighting for terminology and correct terminology and, and, and analysis and all this, that became a smaller and smaller group. And really, the whole purpose, right, the whole purpose of, of theory, right, is, you know, if you go back to Marxist theories, you know, the philosophy is only interpreted the world, the point is to change it, right? As someone who studies rhetoric, you know, I've come to think of theory and philosophy and all this ideological stuff that we do, is they, the, the background work, you know, that, that, that you can do to kind of help understand the world, right, to help kind of understand why things are the way they are, or what's going on here. Um, but the stating of the theory, right, doesn't change it, right? The dynamic is different, right? What you kind of understand. So now the next question is, okay, how do we do this, right? How do we build a movement that is, that is built on the principles that we claim, right? That's about universal emancipation, right? The end of oppression. Like, it's built on equity, diversity, right? It's kind of like multicultural democracy, right? Small d from the ground up. Right? I mean, I mean, all these, you know, the things, and, you know, and, and Klein, I remember, I don't know which book it was in, but she talks about the kind of reclaiming of the term of humanism, right? And I really do think that's, that's kind of the move, you know? Is that there's gotta be the space for care, right? And of course, you know, some feminists have been arguing for this a long time, like that care economy, right? The whole idea about we gotta shift it. And you know, I think a lot of, a lot of people in, in political circles, I can remember people talking about this at the time. I was like, and I didn't fully under, this is like, you know, I can remember this before I really kind of understand what was at stake in these arguments and stuff. And it was like, the care, Thursday, the care economy, there's gonna be all like, this touchy-feely, and they want to get away from hard, and I'm like, wait a minute, that doesn't make any sense to me. It's like, most of our lives are spent in, like, in, in care relationships, right? Whether it's caring for kids, whether it's caring for each other in relationships, whether it's caring for a community, whether it's caring for elders, right? And most of that work is, is like unpaid, but highly valued by people, right? Not by politicians, not by the, but like, if you think about the stuff that matters, right, that, that is at the core, it's like, how do we elevate that, right? That's care economy. And it's also that same thing, it's like, you know, like people at the front. And so when I read this piece by Naomi Klein, and why I wanted to share it with you tonight, it's simply because, you know, she says it right there, you know? She wants to be part of an international left rooted in values that side with the child over the gun every single time, no matter whose gun, no matter whose child. A left that is unshakably morally, morally consistent and does not mistake that consistency with moral equivalency between occupier and occupied. One of love. So I don't know. What's the connection? I, I'm not sure I have the connection for you tonight. But I know that was, you know, that's, that really framed my week. And you know, it wasn't just my week, certainly, but... Um, there's a couple of things that I wanted to point out to you. This is, uh, I, I feel I should do like, so, like, a, like a secondary sideshow, like called like Mailbag or something like this. In particular, the, the Mailbag Star of the Week is like starry-eyed, starry-eyed, uh, JGC, right, one of our longtime supporters. Um, she's been sending just some great stuff. Um, and the, uh, she sent me this tweet. That was kind of screen captured and tweeted by Jess Piper. Um, Jess Piper, she's, she, I don't, I don't expect you to know who she is. I mean, I didn't know who she was. She's Executive Director for Blue Missouri, um, former Democratic nominee for state rep and host of Dirt Road Democrat Podcast. Um, that's who she is. Anyway, she posted this, and it was a, uh, and this is what she said. She said, "This grifter always says the quiet part out loud for those too dumb to read between the lines. He created the CRT panic, and now he's working to connect terrorists to academia. Share this, put it on all your socia ls. He did it once." Positive, he could do it again. So this was a tweet from Christopher Rufo. Yes, indeed. You probably already guessed that. And this is what Christopher Rufo said publicly. He said, "Conservatives need to create a strong association between Hamas, BLM, DSA, and academic decolonization," that's in quotes, "in the public mind. Connect the dots, then attack, delegitimize, and discredit. Make the center-left disavow them. Make them political untouchables." There's the plan, right? I mean, you gotta give it to this guy. I mean, this is, this is the plan. He's captured it perfectly, right? This is not simply just like, like, let's attack, I'm gonna attack the left. He's giving people a strategy of what to do, right? And he doesn't say, we need to, we And he doesn't say we need to, we need to kind of like, help people understand these, you know, we need to create a strong association. There is no connection. Between all these different things. So they're going to create it. We need to create it rhetorically. Right? That association between Hamas, Black Lives Matter, Democratic Socialist Association, uh, Democratic Socialists of America, rather, and academic decolonization in the public mind. We need to craft this in people's mind. Why? Because when you connect it, you put that all together, you can then, then you attack them. Which will help delegitimize them and discredit them, right? And then this guy knows the truth. The center-left, right, those center Democrats will then turn and disavow those folks on the left. Because that's all they know how to do, because they don't want to be, they want to be kind of like the neutral party. And so they will attack those on the left. Why does Christopher Rufo want to do this? Right? Because he, now, look, this is what the right wing, if you think about what's, what's happened in the Republican Party. Right? The reason why we had to deal with this, this school board stuff anyways, right, is because. The Republican Party politicians, right, after, you know, kind of like stoking the fire of kind of racism and all this kind of stuff for decades. They are now running scared from their base. Right? And Christopher Rufo is one of those people, right? One of those people that is pushing, right? The most extremist positions with the Republican Party and among conservatives. Right? And then he knows that his party. Right? His party, they had to make a choice. And the Republicans, for the Republicans present, they've made their choice. Right? All the extremism, they decided to, to throw their hat in with them. They threw their hat in with Trump. Right? I don't care what these people said in private conversations about what they really think. When it came down to voting for something, when it publicly supporting like, like Trump or publicly supporting, like, you know, January sixth insurrection or whatever you're going to talk about, some of these most extremist stuff, they sided with them. Because they were afraid of their base. So Christopher Rufo does not want that to happen on the left. He doesn't want to have some of the strongest movements on the left. Team up with or have. Put pressure on the center-left. Of the Democratic Party. So that the Democratic Party, those centrists there, no longer try to, uh, fall over themselves to sound more Republican than the other one. But rather say like, hey, if I want to keep my job, I better start listening to these people, start supporting them. And so he knows this is a way of like driving a stake. In between the movements and the official, like, you know, whatever, leadership of Democratic Party. And he's telling his people, anybody who will. Follow his Twitter account. What you need to do. And if you check into right-wing media right now, or even on Twitter, it's already happening. So, you know, that was. Another kind of thing, another little, uh. Another little moment of. Difficulty, shall we say?
This week. Oh, my God, I'm sorry.
One of these things. So, you know, I'm looking at this and we've got about a, uh, we've got less than a month left before the municipal elections and the school board elections. And, um. We'll see what happens. I mean, I know there's, uh, people here in the Penridge, in Penridge that are working their butts off in support of the, uh, you know, um, Penridge. Community Alliance, you know, that's kind of what the banner they're going under. You know, so if you are in the Penridge School District, you're voting for the Penridge School Board. You know, it's like Carolyn Ciarino. Leah Foster Rash, Chris Kaufman, Ron Wertz, and Bradley Merkel Gump. That is who you want. Right? I'm going to drop this right now into our chat, right? These are the people that you want to vote for. Um. It's what has happened here, you know, in the, you know, I'm, look, I'm not going to rehearse it all over again tonight. I mean, anybody, if you're listening to the show, early, late at the time, uh, you know, as well as I do, that we've talked about this ad nauseam. And now it's, uh. I mean, it's great to see the organization. It's great to see the organizing. It's great to see these candidates working their, working their tail off. Um. We're also in a fairly conservative region. Um, and because, you know, people play team sports. Um. Are you going to vote for the person with the R next to their name? Or are you going to vote for someone who's actually got kind of our kids' best interests at heart? And we're going to see. Right? I mean, I do think that this election is, uh, you know, it is a. A referendum, referendum on the community too. You know, it's like, who are we? You know, you see these things, we are Penridge. Well, who is Penridge? And that's a, you know, that's a, that's a tricky thing to say. But I do think that that's. Part of the stakes here. I say it's tricky to say because like, look, the fact of the matter is. Is that voter turnout during school board elections is extraordinarily low. In normal times, most people cannot tell you who's on their school. Now that's changed somewhat in Penridge. I mean, now we've got some high-profile. Moms for Liberty extremists on our school board. Who've given Penridge a name, uh. You know. In the worst possible way. So, we shall see. So do what you can between now and November seventh. Um. To get, get out the vote. Um, if you can donate some money. If you can help out by sharing their social media. Um, tell other people, tell your neighbors, talk to your neighbors about it. Um, put a yard sign out. Right? I know that, you know, people always, you know, go poo poo yard signs. But as I've said on this show before. Yeah, if you talk to political operatives, okay? Like, you know, people like who are, you know, professional campaigners that work on political campaigns and all this stuff, and they will give you. Data. Um. Quote unquote, data about the effectiveness of yard signs. Okay? And. Generally what they mean. When they are talking about. Effectivity of yard signs, right? Um. What they're focused on are the translation of yard, does a yard sign convince somebody to vote for your candidate? Right? And this is where I would agree with them. No. If I put a yard sign out my yard, it's not going to convince everybody to kind of go and vote for them. Right? So if you're thinking about it in those terms, right, yard signs for, to those people are ineffective. Right? But I have always contended, and I will still contend. That yard signs are important. Because they let other people know they're not alone. They let other people know that there is hope. You know, that's one of the most difficult aspects of the kind of political environment we're living in right now is despair is always right around the corner. Despair and the kind of kissing cousin, uh. Cynicism. And that comes a lot of times, and, you know, again, if you look at social movement research, it'll show you again and again, it's like, that comes from situations where you feel like you're alone, you feel isolated, disconnected. So what that does is it starts to build a community. Now, now here, here's the trick, right? The trick is. Is that if you're, if you know that political organization, political organizing, right, changing the direction of like even like a school board. Is not something that happens overnight. Right? Then you put that yard sign out there, yes, ahead of election, because you want people to vote for these candidates, but you're also putting it out there for the long haul, for the long term. Because people remember that over time. I'll never forget. The, the moment when. Was doing a little canvassing in my neighborhood, this is, uh, last year, I guess. Um. And I had the, the, you know, the voter registration, and the goal here was to go out and kind of, you know, talk to Democrats. Right? Um. And everyone had always said, and, you know, you know, so my neighbors who are also, you know, we were, you know, their teachers, or they're Democrats, or unionists, or whatever it might be, you know, always would always feel like, you know, uh, you know. We're in the minority around here, right? And so I'm looking at the voter rolls, right, and looking at Democratic, um, the Democratic list, I'm going to go and kind of knock on their doors and talk to them, introduce myself, that kind of stuff. Uh, which I, you know, I'm, you know, I don't know you, I don't know what you think about me, but, um. It's, it's not, it's not the thing I'm the best at. I have to admit. Um, but nonetheless, you know, whatever, did some of that. And what was remarkable to me. Is that in my little neighborhood. I could not believe the number of registered Democrats that were in my neighborhood. Right? Now, look, I don't translate Democrat equals progressive, right? I don't, you know, I, I don't see it, but they just have a D after their name. But I had no idea. Alright, there'd be people I see and I, you know, just wave to people, you know, you, I walk my dog all the time, so I'll like, you know, you wave to people and things like this, you know, I'm just like, whatever, probably in the back of my brain somewhere, it's like, oh, you know, I probably just avoid talking to them about politics because they're, you know, they're conservative. Come to find out. I'm full of shit. Right? That my perception of where I live, because I, I had been told for so long that I live in a conservative area. I just made assumptions, right? I thought I was alone. I thought I knew two or three people that, okay, we're on, you know, that I could talk to, but I was kind of like, you know, in this little area where I was completely, like, you know, had like. Died in the wool Republicans all the way, or, you know, right-wing conservatives all over the place. It turns out, no. And for me. Right? During these school board candidates is the first time that I've actually kind of met communities of people since I've lived in Percacy. That are connected to all this stuff. And that goes to, you know, the, the credit all goes. You know, to the crew of folks at, you know, the, 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 the Penridge Community Alliance and all these kinds of, the school board candidates who are running. And the organization that has been there, the people who have been building this for the past kind of god, like five years or so. I remember when I first moved to Percacy and I tried to get in touch with local Democrats, right, and I was basically chastised for not knowing where the meeting was. Right? Told to sign up for a mailing list and then would get emails that were just kind of like, you know, someone just talking about things that are going on and talking about other people, but then asking when there's a meeting, there's going to be no meeting. So I just assumed, you know, that, that's going to continue to go on. And that's my own fault, right? I mean. You know, at the time, I had other things going on. I was really involved by, with my, my union at Kutztown and so on, uh, so I was, you know, we were built up to a strike and all that kind of stuff. So, you know, there's other things that was going on that I didn't push too hard, so I'm not going to be too hard on myself, but. But, you know, it, you know, it's that kind of mentality and I, and I bring that up, right? Not simply just, you know, tell you about my experience, but, you know, that's one of the reasons, but. I, I've had that conversation with so many people. When they, when you start seeing those yard signs go up and like, oh, wow. I'm not alone. And I think, you know, look, the people who have been doing all this work for these political candidates who've been out there knocking doors and everything are really at, you know. At the cutting edge of building. A, a, a new future for this area. Right? They're laying that groundwork, building real solidarity. Real community. So, and, you know, my hat goes off, it goes off, it goes off to them, my hat goes out, my heart goes out to them, my hat comes off to them, that kind of thing. So I know, and, and again, I know we've got really serious school board races in, in Palisades, we've got serious school board races in, in Soudern and in Central Bucks and in Quakertown and Lehigh Valley. And I know, so I'm just talking about Penridge here tonight, but. I, I do think, you know, I, I was telling them, like, you know, it's my son's birthday this week, right? And, um. I, I was, my, my folks came, came here from, uh, from New York for the weekend, we were kind of, you know. Here for the whole weekend. And I was talking about it last night and. I'm trying to tell them what's going on, right? You know, they're asking, oh, what's going on? Is it really that bad? I'm trying to explain what's going on and I feel like a crazy person talking about it. And they're like shaking their heads, like, I can't believe this is happening in this little place like Percacy. Like a little place that nobody knows about. Right? Nobody outside this region knows what the hell Percacy is. And if they've seen the sign, they say they call it Perkazy, right? You know this. And yet. Here we are. The tip of the spear of a, of a national right-wing strategy, the first school district ever to hire Jordan Adams and his like extremist consultants, Christian nationalist curriculum, and to pump that crap into our schools. Wow. Wow. So, yeah, that's what's been going through my mind. What's going through yours? What's going through yours? Keep on getting all these. Messages. Who is messaging me? Are you guys messaging, messaging me? Tell me, you checking, hey, you alright? Uh, hold on, I'm going to go check. Oh, okay. Um. Yeah, so that's kind of where, uh, where my head has been at. And then, you know, on top of that. Whatever. I mean, I've told you about it. I wouldn't want to sit there and kind of bellyache about getting sick all the time, but man, I've been. It's been some of the worst allergy season that I've had and it's just, uh, it's been, it's been doing me in, I'll tell you. Um, well, we'll see, we'll get it all squared away. We'll get it all squared away. Anyways, uh, I'm just glad to be back in the studio again tonight. I'm glad to be back here doing this and, you know. I've said this before and I'll, I'll say more about this another time, but, um. It's, I, I find myself continuously to go back, back, continuously coming back to the question about how to. Use this space in the most effective way. How to use the, the, you know, the, the growing independent media space in, um. Bucks County and, and how to be part of that in the most effective way. And, and I'm, I'm really trying to sort that out. You know, um, and if I'm really honest with you, you know. You know, I, I have like competing things going on right now, right? Like, I mean, one of them is like, which I've talked about, you know, on the show has been, I just had some health stuff that could, you know, it just, it just. It just, it seems like it's never-ending, right? Thank God, none of it's, none of it's serious yet, but it's the kind of thing that. Could be, could have been, right? And who knows, maybe we'll prove in the short term or long term that we'll be. But it's just been, you know, it's been one thing after the other. And so. Um. So I've been thinking a lot about, you know, trying to just negotiate a whole bunch of stuff like that and then trying to catch up on work because I missed so many days at work at the beginning, right at the beginning of the year. Um, but I'm also thinking about, you know. You, you know, I'm really enjoying the work that I'm doing with the Bucks County Beacon, um, you know, doing, producing, um, podcasts with them. Um, and I'm really curious, you know, my. My dream had always been. Um, to establish a, like a community media center, basically. Right? Um, I even, uh, you know, set up a whole nonprofit, was ready to go and, uh, we had this kind of very. I, I mean, literally it was, it was kind of. Seat of our pants, right? Like attempt to get something off the ground, um. Um, and it was, it was really cool. And I think, you know, technically it's still, it's still registered. Um. It's a nonprofit organization, but. Um. You know, it's been to do that, to coordinate and work together, um, in, in, in kind of areas. I mean, I would love to do things like, you know, God, like. Like working with people on media strategy, for example, or, um, to working with kids and kind of setting up podcasts about not just political stuff, but, you know, other stuff too as well. Uh, it'd be so awesome to have a hub like that. Um, and I've also been doing a lot of thinking about, you know, how to, you know, again, yeah, how to be most effective with that and how to kind of make use of that and. And, and. And how to make sure I've got the time to do things, do things well. And it's been kind of posed to me, uh, by myself, right, um, quite a bit of, of late about. Just wanting to, you know. Want to do something and do it well and have anything about what to do with that. Um, in addition to think about, you know, what the hell am I going to do with the rest of my life? Um. That's like legitimately, uh, like a concern. So we'll see, I mean. Uh, there's been, you know, we've, there's another kind of negotiations update that we got today from our union. I haven't read it yet, but it's like, uh. You know, we'll see what happens in this contract, you know? I mean, I really think about, you know, um. I, I wish I had more to talk about on that or even, but there's like no information like of, you know, of significance that I've seen, you know, maybe I'll eat my words after, if I read the. I, I wish I had more to talk about on that or even, but there's like no information like of, you know, of significance that I've seen, you know, maybe I'll eat my words after, if I read the update today, but, you know, I, I, it's been, it's just been a weird time to be doing what I do. I mean, I'm watching, you know, I've, I've been part of uh, higher education for so long and I'm watching something I really loved and cared about just being destroyed. Watching my career turn into a job. You know, it's just been a weird, been a weird time. So there's lots of kind of points of reflection and thinking about, you know, how do you, how do you best use the kind of, you know, chapter two or three or whatever of your life? Um, in a way that can be effective, um, especially in the wake of what's gone devastated, you know? And, and I'll say this too as well. I mean, what I don't, I don't know how I got off on all this track tonight, but, you know, it's funny is like for the longest time in my life is that, um, there's when something was going wrong, right? Something was happening. It's like I was, you know, always try to be like, you know, or not try to build, we just want to be front and center, right? Want to be front, I'm not, not front and center, but want to be, you know, directly involved and get all this kind of stuff. Do organizing stuff. And I do what a lot of kind of activists and organizers, all the, the political folks have done over the year, you know, invest, invest, invest and kind of burn out and crash and get back up and do it again and do it. And this, the school district stuff is, is a really of a different magnitude for me. And it's been, uh, you know, and part of it, it's been frustrating because of, you know, when I generally run this podcast, the same time as Penridge, um, Penridge School Board meetings, which is one of the things that's been going through my mind is like, you know, do we need to change the time and do all this other kind of stuff? But it's, it's the kind of fight that just feels just e- e- exhausting. And I'm like, look, I'm like, I'm on the edges of the direct fight. I mean, you look at, you watch those, you watch what happens in those, uh, those school board meetings, right? You watch those and those are the people who are directly in the fight. They're there every single week. Right? And I don't know. I don't know. I don't know what I'm trying to say. I'm tired. Frustrated a little bit, um, and a little bit kind of in this reflective mode. So, there it is. Anyways, I'm going to call it there tonight. And, um, you know, thank you all for kind of stopping by, uh, spending some time here. And I, I know I've said this, there's probably nobody listening by this point. So like, oh God, he's a freaking like depression ball this time. If there's other people out there who, um, who, well, I'll say, I'll say this for another time. Anyways, this is, uh, Kevin Mahoney. Um, I am the editor and founder of Raging Chicken. Uh, I want to thank you so much for tuning in tonight. I look forward to, uh, the week ahead, um, and, uh, trying to kind of, you know, find a way to take back the, uh, the space of this community, um, be a, a part of that in an effective way and keep doing what we're doing, everybody. Um, thank you for all you do. Thank you for your support. See ya.